Good afternoon, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. This is our June 6, 2016 City of Plack Commission Meeting. We will now have our invocation by Reverend Ken Johnson, Executive Director of Roddy Repoy's Ranch. For now, in Reverend Johnson's absence, we're gonna ask Vice Mayor Brown to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Be a help to you Father. Thank you for all the many gifts that you have given to us. We need to thank you for going to bed at night and getting up in the morning. Please guide us as leaders of this community and help us make the best decisions that help the most people for the longest time. Guide us, strengthen us, and help us to be the citizens that we need to be. Take care of our families and take care of the mayor's mother if she gets ill. We pray this in your name.
Amen.
I believe in the spirit of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes from the... Sorry, real quick, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Morley.
Present.
All members are present in the accountable forum.
Thank you. Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes from the May 12 meeting?
So we'll approve.
Motion to second on the floor to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Just a quick housekeeping measure. I see we've got a number of people who are here about the Women of the Clock Tower and item number five on the agenda. Just for your purposes, we're pulling item five on the agenda. We'll bring it back up. Mr. Griffith's not here today. He worked on the grant, so we're pulling that. So if there's anybody here for that, just wanna let you know so I don't have to wait until the last minute. We're now moving on to our public recognition section. In our public recognition section, I wanna bring up a very special young man first. And the young man that I wanna bring up is Owen Meeks. Owen Meeks is our Putnam County Delegate for the American Legion Boy State Convention. I know I've got a few members from the American Legion up here as well. Would you guys come up and join Mr. Meeks as he comes up and tells us a little bit about what he's doing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I tell you about Boy State and all of its opportunities and what a privilege it is to be the delegate for Putnam County, I would first like to thank Mr. Mayor Hill for being this evening. All right, Boy State is a program that's been going on for quite some time at our nation's capital, well, not our nation's capital, but Florida's capital, Tallahassee. Florida State is a program which invites all these young men, preferably just the 11th grade, it invites all these young men to shadow state representatives and all these people in the political system to teach the youth, or to teach me, about Florida's political system and my responsibility as a U.S. citizen to be an active member in our political system and my community. It's a great program. Also during the summer after Boy State, I'll be interning full-time for seven weeks at a Christian company called Apology Express, which is a nonprofit organization devoted towards supplying everyone with recent creation science research. So I'm very blessed to have this opportunity and very blessed to tell you about it this evening. If y'all would like to say anything about Boy State that I missed...
And also, I've had an opportunity to speak to Owen, and I can tell you, he spoke to Commissioner Borum first. Commissioner Borum came back raving about this young man, and so we scheduled a 20-minute conversation that took us about two hours. Because once I started talking to him, I was just overwhelmed at the amount of enthusiasm, amount of pride in our community and just how intelligent this young man is and how he's gonna be a great steward for this community. And so as you began your travels, you're also set to do your mission work as well. Vice Mayor Brown wants to give you something so that everyone will know that you're from Placka when you go on your trip.
All right.
It's our opinion that outstanding employees get and people who come to our community to visit, they get it too. It shows that you're an outstanding person from an outstanding city.
Thank you.
Oops.
So again, we wanna thank you, Owen, for being a great representative of this community and a great example of what we want our young people to be. We had another recognition that we were gonna do for our Clean It Up, Green It Up sponsors, and we're gonna move that until our last meeting of the month so that we can make sure we get everyone on board. So with that, that ends our public recognition section. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Item three on the agenda is public comment. All items here for public comment will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on those items. I have a speaker card from John Lyon. Will you please come forward?
Yeah, my name is John Lyon. I am the owner of Steamboat Willie's located at 309 St. John's Avenue. I was informed yesterday that there was a town hall meeting getting input regarding the alcohol ordinance, and I'd like to give my input as a current alcohol establishment. I've been open in downtown about 30 years. We have seen the alcohol laws changed quite a few times, and I think readjusting the laws is proactive in seeing the town move forward. We used to have a restaurant for about 25 years, and when the economy crashed in 2007, we had to close. So we have been discussing getting back into the restaurant business. We're up in the air about it. We go back and forth with it. Restaurant business is a tough business, and either you love it or you hate it, or you hate to love it, one or the other. And whenever I think of getting back into the restaurant business, we think of opening earlier hours. We think of mimosas and sangria, things to that effect, that brunches would take. You know, it's 10:00 a.m. and so forth, you would have brunch, and that would be some of the beverages that you'd serve. I believe the changes would give us more opportunity to bring business into Placka, especially with the development of the 100 Block in the Hampton and also other restaurants that are currently in business. It would also open up things like art walks and wine tastings and things to that effect, things that'll bring people into the downtown. I would personally like to see the hours changed to be open earlier and close at 2:00 a.m. like every other day of the week. We're currently open from 1:00 p.m. to midnight on Sundays. And just to give you a little background, the service industry on the weekends is whenever they're really busy. So Sundays is like their Friday. Monday and so forth is slow in the restaurant business, so they come out on Sunday, it's like their Friday. They come out on the weekends, and Sunday night would be their Friday. And what they do is they come in around 11 o'clock, and of course, we have to ask them to leave at midnight. That's where the current ordinance is. A lot of times what they're doing is they come in to relax, and they have, they get together with each other, other people in the service industry. It's almost like a business after hours. They talk about their weekend, that they worked and so forth, and discuss things like We, I know people that work in the service industry in St. Augustine, Gainesville, they've changed their laws to accommodate more to the restaurants and bars and so forth in that area. We have, they have common spots, the people in the industry over there, that they pick a spot, they go to after work, and they talk and do the things that they do, just to relax for a couple hours.
Okay.
And they've changed their hours to stay open till 2:00 a.m. Gainesville's every day of the week, I believe, and St. Augustine has their start. They, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., they serve beer and wine and so forth, and they will, they open up earlier for beer and wine, and they do alcohol, liquor, all the way till 2:00 p.m. Or 2:00 a.m. Okay. I do believe that change in the ordinance is showing a progressive for downtown. I really appreciate y'all being proactive instead of reactive, and I do think that it will help other businesses in downtown, as well as possibly open other businesses in downtown. And I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Mark Spalding, 3400 Crow Avenue, Placka. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you having the wherewithal to call Town Hall Meeting on Alcohol Ordinance. That's what I'm here to speak about. From an economic standpoint, I'm not in that business. To me, it's really two-sided ordinance, both of them equally important, and that's consumption and sale. Consumption, quick story, friend of mine lives in Hastings. I was at a restaurant, he came in, sat down at the table next to me, quarter to 12, he ordered a drink. Restaurant said, "I'm sorry, I can't serve you." He said, "Okay," so he ordered his meal, and he ate, and he left. Next time that man gets in his car at 10:30, quarter to 11, to go somewhere to eat, do you think he's gonna drive to Putnam County or Placka? He'd go to St. Augustine. We will lose people's business like that. I think sales are important for mornings, just as the gentleman just spoke. I'm very adamant about that. One thing that's also we're losing is we're inviting recreation to our community, city, county, the whole area. People come to Placka, and I've seen it over and over, people from out of town, they pull into one of our local grocery stores, they go up to buy their beer. Beer or wine, that's all you can get in a grocery store. Some of them have a sign up, "Sorry, you can't buy alcohol until 1:00 o'clock." They leave. Next time they come, where do you think they're gonna shop? It's gonna be out of town before they get to Placka. So you're not only losing alcohol sales, you're losing retail sales. And so I think that they're, I think the majority of the alcohol consumed that is sold before 1:00 would not be consumed until well after 1:00. I think people are coming here and stocking up and going to do their thing. I don't think it's a city rule or my city job or my job to direct the morality of people and their morale. That's not our job. That's not the city employee's job. What they do on their time is one thing. But I just, if and when that comes up as they motion and they vote, I would highly encourage you to pass that ordinance and change it. Also, currently, the county is selling alcohol before 1:00 anyway. I live in the city, very close to the county. I've seen people many times pull up to locally, it used to be the Lucky Way Convenience Store, go in to buy their beer. Sorry, you can't have it. They go less than a half mile to the corners of Silver Lake and Westover, and they buy all the beer they want. So anyway, I think from an economic standpoint, and to make this city and downtown thrive, I really encourage you to pass that if and when it comes up. Thank you for your time.
I'm a country girl that moved to the city, raised on a farm where we had all sorts of animals.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm Lethar Gottfried, and I'm from 1903 St. John's Avenue. Okay. Well, I guess in my older age, I'm wanting to go back to my youth because I'm seeing, and not only me, but I'm seeing a movement going on in which people are growing their own gardens, more so in the city. They're, and I'm running into so many people who are raising chickens, and I wanna raise chickens, but I'm in the city. And my purpose in coming here today is to ask you all to consider your ordinance on allowing us to have chickens in the city. I would like to have about five chickens. I'm not gonna eat them out there, I'm just gonna eat their eggs. But yeah, it'd be sort of like pets. My grandchildren will enjoy them. My neighbors, I'm a school teacher, my kids in my classroom, they will learn from it. Right now, we have a garden, we've gone organic, and my neighbors and friends, they're so interested and they're doing it, and the same thing would be with the chickens, and I've been asking about it for a while, and I know I spoke with the lady in the office, and a lot of people are calling, asking about chickens. So my purpose is simply to ask you all to consider allowing us to be able to have chickens in a chicken coop in our backyard. And I, as I stated, I live on St. John's Avenue. Thank you.
All the other speaker cards that happened were item five.
Mama's combination.
It's a combination. You said you were gonna come speak now?
If, if, if it's time?
I don't find we're gonna pull until next meeting, so if you wanna go ahead.
My name's George Moncaus. I live at 1423 South 15th Street, and a lot of people here know. I haven't talked to Ms. Brown prior to the meeting starting. I ain't got no beef with nobody. I had beef when I came in, so I'm doing wait and hold it until y'all bring that back up. But as far as the Blue Crab Festival, we need to coordinate together, okay? If y'all want us to get a tent or chairs or whatever, all I know is last year, when we had the Memorial Day service, we had about 150 people in that old grassy area with that big old library this year, okay? And it's Memorial Day weekend, not Blue Crab Festival weekend. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
I need to share your concern that you had and have passed out. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, respectful, Commissioners, I'd like to...
Charles Gauthier, 447 East End Road, San Mateo, Florida, 32187. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't wanna take your valuable time on something that you're canceling, and that's all I was trying to say, sir. On the drainage moving of the tower clock, okay? So that's all I have to say. I wanna thank you, gentlemen and ma'am, for all your efforts that you do put out for the city of Placka. It's not like your loafers sitting around home. I know you're out there working, and I commend you for your efforts, and I wanna tell you that. It's as much different than last time we talked, Mr. Mayor. And I probably learned something there, okay? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for that.
And definitely thank everyone at the post for the work that you do in this community.
Yes, sir.
You guys are always on the top when issues that come up.
Thank you, sir.
And again, thank you for your services.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all I have to say, sir.
And if you can, Commander?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I can get you two and the city manager to get together.
Yes, sir.
Coordinate something for the next meeting.
That would be outstanding. Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, excuse me. Thank you, sir.
I was too tired that I would leave the address soon. I'll try to get it downtown.
We'll just keep the change today. Is there anyone else here for public comments? We didn't put one in. All right, come on, let's keep your public comment. You can throw your card out and give it to us later.
Royce Skarbowski, 105 West St. John's Terrace, East Placka. I just wanted to say, congratulations to, you all deserve a congratulations, that the city of Placka downtown is really moving a long way. I come home from Sunday at Bible study we have, and I come back and I see Willie's Bar up there loaded up to the thing. You know, if they respect everything and a place to go, who's to say about the moral value of them? But you, as a business owner, should be responsible for the people that leave your premise and act up to disturb downtown. That you guys are trying to bring businesses down, which is working. But I just wanted to share, you see the spirit working here of respecting each other, and you see God moving, that you're gonna see, again, people having income, they're gonna have jobs, a real estate man's gonna sell more businesses, there's gonna be a surplus in the city budget. The man doesn't believe me over there. I keep asking him, "Where's that surplus?" But keep going on what you're doing because you're doing a good job, and you can see with your eyes, when you come over the bridge, things are going in a positive mode because you are making a change, giving God the glory of it.
Thank you, sir.
Always good to have a part in the message. Now we'll move on to item three of the agenda, consent agenda. For the record, item D of consent agenda has been withdrawn. So we have items A through C. Item A, Resolution Number 2016-1239, awarding permanent maintenance bid to Agro Pro Incorporated in the amount of $30,480, authorized execution of all contract agreements associated with the bid award. B, adopt Resolution Number 2016-1240, authorizing the maintenance perpetual easement over portion of 42-10-6850-1460-0083 to the state of Florida DOT, where state road 20 drains improvement. C, want Commissioner Rufus Borum at the city of Placka voting delegates of the Florida League of Cities 2015-2016 annual conference, invites Mayor Brown as the alternate voting member. Are any items on the consent agenda to be removed?
Remove items A through C.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number four, summer meeting schedule, 2016 CRA meetings are trimmed calendar. Mr. Feger.
This schedule was proposed by SCAP, and we discussed it last week. What this does is it provides for budget workshops on the same dates as the July 14th and 28th regular meeting date. It frees up the commission from meetings from the city commission and the CRA in August so that all who will be attending is the annual conference, which is scheduled from 18th to 20th. Meetings will resume on September 18th on the regular schedule. So all this does is it changes the August schedule.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. A second. Motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Bob's been moved, and the city manager to report, and Parkhead's Chief Shaw. You have anything for us? Chief, you have anything to deliver? Mr. Crow. Yule. Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Feger.
I've got quite a bit.
I learned a long time ago, they're best lawyers. Mr. Holmes.
No.
Sure.
Okay, well, I have just a couple of things. First of all, I wanna say that, you know, we did just have a very successful, I believe, successful Blue Crab event. You know, we had some concerns about the overlapping Memorial Day, and I get that. We'll, I'll work with the commanders and try to fix that. You know, I wanna commend the Public Works Department for the efforts that they made with the request that we tried to coordinate schedules and put enough staff on to deal with some of our litter control and garbage control throughout the four-day event. I'm not gonna go into great detail, but I think the wife of Jonathan Griffith, the Public Works manager, actually recognized the staff that did that. I will tell you that the three times that I visited the Blue Crab over the weekend, it was outstanding. I saw a lot of movement. I saw a lot of Public Works folks out there doing a great job, and I received nothing but compliments on the appearance of the Blue Crab this year. It was my first official one, and so I'm proud to say that I believe the city of Placka came off very well, looking very well for that weekend, and that's attributed to those folks that worked that weekend. Again, I'll let Public Works Manager Jonathan Griffith give more detail for the next meeting so we can have his folks to be recognized. And secondly, and hopefully lastly, the, over the weekend, this past weekend, it became obvious that we were facing a, what could be a major storm event in the city of Placka. So Monday morning, when I got to the office, first thing we did is I called some of the team members in. I had Fire Chief Mike Lambert, I had the Police Chief, I had Captain Newell, Matt Reynolds, Jonathan Griffith, who was on vacation, called in on speakerphone. And that morning, we decided we might wanna put a plan together on how we might be able to alleviate some of the issues that we may be facing later that evening. 3:30 come around, we met one more time, put a command officer in place, and brought the Public Works folks in. Equipment readiness was taken care of, we had equipment stationed at various locations. Everybody was ready to go. Jermaine Budwills from Public Works and Charles Poole from Public Works, and myself came in and stayed out all night, went out during the storm events and made sure that the storm drains were cleared, made sure that if there was trees in the green road, that was removed. I can't say enough about the Fire Department and the Police Department, how they work together. I'm gonna ask Acting Chief Grimes, Jr., if he would, I think we had, what, about 13 calls or so that night that the Fire Department ran, and it was amazing to see how everybody came together, and I'm gonna tell you that, you know, it's what we've been preaching for the last year, and about working together and reminding each other that we're not just employees here, but we're also family with each other, and everybody depends on each other. And the camaraderie that went on that night and the way that it went, we actually shut down two of our streets. We shut down, I believe it was mostly at 13th, and then Crill at the underpass. And we had one car that got stuck in the road, we had to get out of the road. We had lots of power lines that were either arcing or down. It was a fantastic evening for us to see how we were going to respond. You know, I'm gonna tell you that your staff responded extremely well, and I'm proud of all of them. Thank you very much for the opportunity for me to do that with you, and it was fun, I guess. It was for me, because I didn't have to make a lot of decisions, I got out there, get my hands dirty, so, no, the staff did a great job, and I just wanted you folks to know that they're here. That's all happens for me.
Job well done, guys. Vice Mayor Brown.
I spent some time at board meeting, and the advocacy committee of our party sent out a question here, "Would help us, nobody needs to help to get elected, they're gonna help us." You ought to hear from them in a little while. The president priority. I brought several sheets back, they gave me information about it. The other thing is the revision of the Constitution is coming up, they do it every 20 years. I brought back a little information about it. I left it with our city manager and interviewed, wanted to see that information I brought back. My report.
Mr. Morley.
I just have to go with the city manager, said that it was really nice getting up on Tuesday morning and not having to deal with all that debris, like that storm. Could've actually put it in our street, and probably be an impolite, and if it did, certainly it was removed, so it was really nice after the storm, but also shared the sanctum with the Blue Crab as well. I went down a couple days, and I mean, staff was really on top of the deal. I mean, they weren't standing around, they were really looking for things to make it aesthetically pleasing, but also making sure that it ran smooth, that it was possible good as well. And I really do like the way, I really did like the way it actually looked downtown, because we didn't have the odor that moment comes with that dust of it, we have this kind of around, so.
Mrs. Moore.
I'd like to echo the same thing. The command staff, what y'all did was an awesome job. Everybody working together, and I more so like thanking for the communication, we stayed in constant, we had constant updates, keeping us abreast of all things that was happening, so we got emails off of the night, and I think I responded to a couple of them. But I'd like to thank y'all for the excellent work you did, you did execute it well, and you did it in a safe manner, so, and that goes a long way. Again, the Blue Crab festival was a success. The, I think we had quite a number of thousands of people out there, and I think we didn't have not a single incident as it related to anything with alcohol or whatever, so that in terms of arrests. to anything with alcohol or whatever, so that, in terms of arrests, and I've read the report, and that's what I've seen, and I think that was a very good policy to aim as it related to the number of people that sent our city and the things that, the activities that we have. So again, I'd like to thank everybody who worked at festival, and I think it was a big success. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just echo everything that everyone else said, I won't repeat what they said. But I'll take mine to another turn. I'm just, I'm excited about seeing community policing again. Our citizens are noticing our five cops, our five civil cops interacting with the children, and I think that's a wonderful start to taking it back to a place where I remember. Palaca wasn't like came down to police, and you had actual police in the community, and I think that's a wonderful thing. Our chief, he's, I know my nephew ran up to him, he was like, "Police, police," it was at a football game, and that, you know, that makes our children feel comfortable, and it makes our citizens feel comfortable again. So our fire department, for everything that they are doing with the programs that they have, it's a beautiful thing to see those things happening, to actually see what our city has to offer and letting our kids be a part of those things. So definitely, definitely thank you for all that you are doing to bring our children comfort and our families comfort as well.
That's all been said. Good turn.